All right, it looks like it's seven o'clock. And it looks like we have a quorum. So I'll call this meeting of the special meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance to order. This is a special meeting. We can't add to the agenda. But we do have an executive session scheduled for later in the meeting. What that means technically is that we will put everyone who is not a committee member or an invitee to the executive session into a waiting room, a Zoom waiting room. And when we come out of executive session, I will let Julie know via text. And she will let anyone who is still interested come back into the meeting. We cannot vote in executive session. It will happen after the executive session. That's the spiel. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 16th meeting?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, looks like we have some members of the public and perhaps some press present tonight. Welcome, everyone. Glad that you're spending your time with us. So let's move on to the 2021 budget. Probably the most interesting thing for most of us, for me anyway, is the fund balance, how we're doing there. Barbara, could you speak to that?
Um, I sent that along. Kim gave it to me. You'll see that it's over three million as projected for June, which is on the high side, but as some of the notes were, you know, the fund balance numbers are on the high side because of the combination of unprojected revenue and the reserves built into the budget that you all did with contingency and civil preparedness lines for COVID things and that we did not end up using. So those are the biggest chunks of them, but also so that's the unprotected, that's on the revenue side. And on the budget side, we have, you know, things that are not going to, that were not used, like the senior center and the elderly transportation. There was almost 100,000 extra put in contingency, if you remember. So if you back some of these numbers out, including the civil preparedness, which was really COVID related. You're looking at what we probably would end up in a normal year is not using 200,000, 200,000 versus what we're showing this year because of all those added extras. So the other thing is, is that we're getting there, what's showing there is 353,000 from the school, which is big. We've never really gotten that much, you know, from the schools. And we're also going to be getting $100,000 from that American, I call it ARP, ARP fund that we're going to get over two years for the help that we're getting from the federal government. And the first year we're getting about $100,000, which we should be getting very soon. So there it is. It's a little over 300 million. And I believe your policy was that you never wanted to see the fund balance go below 1 million. So we're in great shape, but it is a very strange year, as you can see. I also believe that your policy is that you didn't, you wanted to have enough money to pay at least two months worth of bills.
Right.
Which now is almost, it's $960,000 a month, so.
About $2 million would cover our policy.
So I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to think, was it two months or two and a half months? I
I think it was two months that we talked about, which is still above the recommended minimum from the state. So we're very financially healthy.
We are, we're very healthy. I mean, we're really, we have, we're flush with cash at the moment. And like I said, there's some unexpected, unexpected things, especially this last one from the federal government. And
How is that restricted, Barbara, if I may ask?
They have not come out with all of the things that are, that the restrictions that are going to be on it. But today I was on a Zoom meeting and someone was asking about if we could use it to buy the cameras that are now, that we're required to get for our police. And they said yes, that we could use them. And it's really like one time, it's almost like your capital plan. I mean, your LoSiP, using LoSiP for one-time capital expenditures. But they have not totally defined that. We got something from the Teamsters yesterday that said they understood that they could use some of that money if they applied for it to buy down their pension. And it was specifically said you couldn't use it for things like that. So I, you know what, we're waiting. We're waiting for the money, but we're also waiting to find out what it can and cannot be used for.
It's good.
In writing, in writing.
I think in, you know, my mind is going toward buying down the mill rate with some of the surplus. It seems like we have
You can't use that money to buy down the surplus.
No, no, I know we can't use that money, but we have, we have a lot of other money that could be essentially returned to the taxpayer.
But you need to decide what you're going to add to or take away from the selectmen's budget before you can figure that out.
Absolutely. I just wanted to throw that out there so that everyone knows, at least where my mind is headed in a general, in a general sense. What else we've got? Let me back up a little bit here. We've got Kim Pigrifka here. I know Kim probably doesn't want to spend all night with us. But did everyone have a chance to look at her report, which I sent out only about half an hour ago?
Oh, I also sent it out. Yeah.
So we're something like 1% down in terms of collections from last year. Kim, could you speak to that?
You're on mute, Kim.
Okay, so it's a little more than 1%. I didn't bring that. What was it? 97 point something versus 98?
Yeah.
The past 15 years. So we have about 303, $307,000 still outstanding. A lot of them are people that normally would be paid. So, um, like I said.
Can I just interrupt you for a minute? Does somebody have something playing in the background or can you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. I just was because I could hear that too. All right. I'm sorry.
Like I think I told Andy in the report, I did print delinquents today and they're going out on Thursday. So hopefully by the next two weeks, all those people that forgot will be paid. I think a lot of people did forget. And I, Barbara did send me a message today saying that, you know, she did send, she did send a lot of reminders out. So, you know, I don't know what's going on.
I mean, it's in a text. I did a couple of email blasts and it was on Facebook. So what we need to do is, as I suggested to you, is the ones that are on the delinquent list, we're going to go and see. I'm just going to email Jimmy and say, let's find out if these people are in our database. And if not, we're going to have to go after them.
Yeah.
To get on that database.
Anyway, I know it happened in the, with the first installment, a lot of people did get a delinquent bill and say, oh my God, I forgot. So I think that happened again.
Well, because of the extension, that is.
Yep. It's, it's, it's just not on their mind. I mean, I called a couple of people last week and they had no idea. They said, oh my God, I can't believe I didn't pay. And actually I went, I drove to a few houses and picked them up. But, um, yeah, I think it's because it was not a normal cycle. People forgot.
Yeah. And it looks like collections went up significantly from the last time we spoke last week.
Yep. Yeah, a lot of people did wait. Yep.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Kim? Okay, good. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay, so do we want to start going through this budget line by line? Are there does anyone have any particular concerns with what they've seen since our last meeting?
Across the Barbara, the town, the budget, the town hall budget. Am I reading this right? Went up 17, almost $18,000. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah. Page one, Kim.
Yeah. The first page under general government.
Yep, okay.
About three quarters of the way down. I just wondered what that was.
Yep, that was, a lot of that is in hourly. A lot of that is in hourly because, you know, we have fuel and all of those things basically stayed the same. The phone is going up a little bit. There's really not anything that jumps out at you except for that. And the new data processing report for the town, for the town hall.
Okay.
Which we're working on getting that new the new software. And so we're looking at having the annual fee, et cetera, in there with that.
This is the software for buildings and land use?
And the town clerk's office too, so, but yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a significant jump.
So the hourly, I'm trying to find it in the book, but the hourly that went up was we, do we put on somebody new or did we increase?
Yep, there's an increase there. There's not someone new.
So who does that money go to?
That's going to go to the, the assistant town clerk has two jobs. He's got the assistant town clerk job and he's got the IT job. And the IT part of that job is under town hall.
And is that proposed to be the 25,000 for the IT?
Yeah, I don't know if they want to talk about all that right now, but yep.
Prior to this year, what have we been paying Jimmy for his IT work? Was that just?
You asked me that?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
Barbara, yeah, sorry, I should have addressed you.
It was, um, it was 18?
And it was an improvement. Police for going up. I think we covered most of this last meeting. One of the questions I have in general, jumping ahead, is the capital improvement budget going down $218,000 basically. What does that mean we're not doing?
It doesn't mean we're not doing anything. We have, for example, we were, we're budgeting less for the new truck that we, that we just got.
Okay.
We have another new truck that we'll be buying this year. And that's been budgeted so we can lessen the amounts that we're going to budget going forward.
Yep. Basically, we filled the accounts with what we've been planning to, okay.
We're going to be using LoSiP money, the local capital improvement funds that the state holds for us that are earmarked for those one-time capital projects. We, I don't know, for example, we have money for the hazardous, we're going to use that under some of the hazardous and diseased tree removal to the tune of $40,000.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Barbara, are there some things, some items that since we, we have a little bit of extra money this year, are there some items that are in the budget that would make sense to put a little bit more money in at this point? In other words, to pay some, to pay a head on some of these items?
Sure. Yeah, we can move them up on, we can move up, you know, some of the public works equipment that we were going to, you know, that's budgeted longer term. We, I can tell you this year, I'm looking to, held off a couple of years is to replace the pickup truck that the road foreman uses. It's pretty shabby looking, but I wasn't going to replace it for a while and it's been a while. So, so that's something that we have this year and we've budgeted and I don't have to budget it again right now. And there are obviously, you know, the salaries that you're going to probably be talking about. And other things that we could absolutely put some money towards, but we're kind of holding off to see what happens, for example, with the local bridge program. I did get a call, I was talking with one of the representatives today who is on the bonding commission and asked, why haven't we heard about this? This money's already been bonded. Been waiting since September to do Davenport. And I did get a call back and I missed it. So we're playing phone tag. But the other thing is, is that we, we have to fix some of these culverts. And there's, there's one on Squire Road that, that, that really needs to get addressed. And so we can throw money into that instead of wait, we're waiting constantly on the state with grants and answers. So you know, we can certainly do that. At the next selectmen's meeting, we're going to actually talk about some of the dirt roads again and culverts.
So these culverts at this level, how many of them would be eligible for LoSiP money or local bridge program money? Any of them?
It'd all be, it'd all be eligible for LoSiP money. Because again, that's money that, to the tune of about $35,000 a year that Roxbury gets. And we've, you know, put it away. And then we've used it whenever we have found a need for it because we, we don't want to save it too long. Because when Malloy, Governor Malloy was in, you know, he called back some of the money that they gave. So we don't want to hold on to it too long. But we use it for those types of things, absolutely.
Yeah.
They're one-time capital purchases. That's what you can use them for. So culverts would fall into that.
Okay. And I'm saying culverts as opposed to, you know, major projects like on Davenport or potentially on a minor bridge.
Correct. And Botsford, even though those are all culverts.
Right. Right. They're just big culverts.
You got, um, if you're letting the public talk, Jimmy just had his hand up. That's up to you.
Oh, Jimmy, go ahead. I didn't see.
No, sorry. I didn't want to interrupt and I don't want to overstep or anything. But one project that, uh, it's not really my department and I didn't have time to bring to the board of selectmen was the Public Works Garage is going to be due for a upgrade or new. You know, I was doing a lot of, a lot of the tech stuff and I would show people around and, you know, the furnaces are 50 years old or when it was built. It's nowhere near energy efficient. And it's kind of just lived past its life, in my opinion, but that is not my department. But that might be something I could foresee in the near future wanting to do.
That might be something to start thinking about budgeting for going forward. That's a, it's a good call, Jimmy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, because that building is not in great shape. Of course, my father worked for a road department his whole life. And every time I visited him at work, none of those buildings were ever in great shape. So it just seems normal to me.
It's not like we haven't done any work on them, but I mean, it is a cinder block building. There are cracks that can certainly be sealed up. We've replaced garage doors, we've replaced windows, we've replaced just the regular doors. You know, we've done some things in there, but yeah, you know what, the guys, they play in the dirt, so it is dirty. But yep, it certainly can use a facelift, but I'm already looking at replacing the roof because the roof needs to be replaced. So they're going to have to build that under that roof.
So Barbara, the line we're looking at is public works building complex as a cap, on the capital budget?
Yep. You could certainly add to that if you would like.
Barbara, do you have a price on the roof replacement for the town garage?
Yeah, well, I actually a little behind, but I am putting it out and I can tell you that it's going to be in the area of 38,000. Well, we're going metal roof. We're going to go with a metal roof.
Okay, good.
It's an interesting idea, you know, going with a, you know, a 50-year roof on a building that may or may not last 50 years.
Well, I mean, it's cinder block. Ed Tierney, if he was here, he'd argue with you about that. Since he built it.
Yeah, it's, that is true. That is true. And really you wouldn't save that much by using an asphalt shingle roof. Okay.
No, we put a metal roof on the larger of the sheds down there.
Yeah.
So that 38 would come out of the 65, is that right?
The 65?
The 45.
45.
Well, if you go all the way across, it's 65, right?
Right, okay.
Total budget is 65, correct?
From there on out, we're just budgeting, we're just throwing in $5,000.
Okay.
That is, that's for the next four, one, two, three, four, five more years.
Yeah.
Really, it's subtotal for 21, 22 is what we're going to have when this budget passes.
Right.
And if you wanted to see what we have in there right now, the second column over is the balance for 2021. That's what we have in our hands right now.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask what the Public Works water tank for truck six is?
For truck six? Oh, it would be truck six. And been trying to purchase something to, because that fire truck is that we use for the water, for the water is really not supposed to be on the road. But it is also leaking now and the guys are looking for us to get something else.
So if we got that.
We're looking at auction places that have, you know, we're not getting anything new.
Right. If we did buy that tank, does that mean we'd be getting rid of the old fire truck?
Yep.
Okay. And what would that process look like? How would you sell that?
Well, they have these auction places, you know, municipal or gov auctions or whatever. And they can take it and they'll do the work for you.
Okay.
Get rid of it. But you can also go on those, which is what we're doing, and find something. I mean, they were looking for another old tanker. But those are, because this holds a lot of water. And, you know, like a, a tank that is from a heating fuel company that would be washed out, obviously, doesn't carry as much. But, um, I don't know that we want a tanker, an old fire truck on some of these dirt roads.
No, this would be a tank that could be picked up with tobacco, put in the back of the truck, strapped down and
This isn't, no, we're actually looking for something that is a truck.
Okay.
With the tank on it. And we're actually looking both to see what, what's out there. If there is a tank, we can put it on. But I can tell you, like this new truck that we just bought and the six yarder, the thing is out every day. And that was going to be the truck that we were going to put the water tank on. And, you know, they're grading roads now and they're just, it's running every day. So they're going to be, I've talked, been talking with Mike Foreman. He's really looking for me and he's brought me several things that we've looked at. So obviously I'm going to go to the selectmen when I come up with whatever it is. But it is time to get rid of that. Big, big planter. Anybody need a doorstop?
I can think of at least one person in town who would welcome that.
Yep.
Okay. Are there other questions on the capital budget?
Did you say that the money from the federal government could be used for the 39,000 or towards the 39,000 that's set aside on the body cameras?
I just learned that today. Yep. But the expense is not the camera. It is what we're going to have to pay to keep that information. And I don't know what that is just yet.
Okay.
There's also grants that are supposed to be coming out for those cameras. And I was saying, you know, this is an unfunded mandate. And they did offer the grants, but they were scoffed up before we even knew about it from larger police departments that were looking to get them before this mandate. And so we lost out on that, but we're waiting to see what else will come along and and then if, in fact, in writing, we see that we can use this. I heard that today that we could use it, but we have to see something in writing.
Repaving town hall lot, we've been talking about that for Um, repaving town hall lot, we've been talking about that for a couple of years.
Yeah, we have.
Going to happen?
It is due and um, uh, we actually were looking to do both this one, it was, it was a lot of money, if you recall, and we were looking to do the firehouse also. And then the, the fire department and ambulance said they were going to take care of doing that. And then they are moving into a building project, so they're not ready to do that right now. And yes, I will go out and get um, other bids, it is, it, it, it really does need to be done. But it was a lot higher than what we had budgeted. A lot higher.
Like, how much higher? I mean, we're looking at, you know, forty thousand dollar uh, capital set aside, how much were they, were the bids?
Like closer to a hundred.
Well, I don't mind the town hall parking lot that much myself.
We're gonna pave in gold, that's why.
Really?
A new first selectmen parking spot, I think it should be gold.
Well, um.
We're working on all these things, you know, things that we can let slide. We're letting, we're still budgeting a little bit here and there, but right, this is not, um, it's not a safety issue, it, it, it could be, it could be redone. And it's, uh, I just think we're just being prudent in not spending everything, especially as we went into this COVID year.
I think that's, initial question here was a good one, you know, is there anything that we'd held back on funding that maybe we should accelerate or, or, or start funding again? But I don't think that, you know, just because we have some surplus sitting there that we should um, start accelerating any items that we wouldn't have anyway.
Think that the, the number one thing that you need to, if we're gonna accelerate, it's we, we've got to replace some of these culverts.
Yeah.
Not, the parking lots not number one on my list.
How much, uh, how much do you think we need to, how much would be prudent for that to begin?
To begin? Well, I mean, we had Cardinal Engineering, we had hired to come in and give us estimates on the bridges and some culverts and um, they had given us a proposal to do a, all of what we had and the selectmen decided we would just hold off and do only a couple of them and I think that I, you know, brought that to your attention.
Last year.
So um, looking to get back on that, we really need to have a manual that says, this is what's wrong and this is how much you should budget. And that was the intention of getting that.
That sounds like something we should think about funding.
Absolutely.
Yes, I agree.
Barbara, how much do we have in the tar account right now?
Uh, it's over, let me think. It could be a little over nine hundred thousand. But you do one of these Davenport's and that's down pretty quick. That's why we don't want to start that because I really, I really feel like we will get that grant if the state would just get off of its arse and, and award these. Uh, because if you spend even a little bit of money before you're awarded, they will not, they will not honor it.
Absolutely, but we should absolutely begin an assessment of the, of the culverts that should be budgeted for.
Do you remember the cost of it, Barbara? Roughly?
Well, it's, to have, to come up with this manual with all of them in it, uh, I mean, I don't even think it's forty thousand dollars to have all of that done, it's, it's invaluable information.
Is there anyone on the board who thinks that that's not a good idea?
I think it's an excellent idea, it'll give us a roadmap, we need it.
Yeah.
Correct.
I think you have the sense of the board on that one.
I can go back and look, um, it was kind of tabled, so I could certainly go back and look and then throw that number in.
Yeah, we, we tabled a lot of things last year, I think, just out of an abundance of caution. Okay.
Was it fair to say, Barbara, that if we, um, if we received all the grants that you're hoping we do, then the nut we would have to cover then would be three hundred and ninety thousand? Am I looking at that right? At least for the ones that are proposed. For Botswana, Hill, Davenport and I guess Squire.
Minor Bridge? If we could get the monies that, um, yeah, if we can get the grants for those, although I'll tell you what, Minor Bridge was, was a lot of money, that culvert. They projected it was going to be a lot of money and um, we didn't put in, we didn't put that out to bid to see what it would actually come in, we only did Davenport. But we did put in the grants for those, those three. So I'm not sure, I'm, uh, so what are you saying? So if we get the money?
Yeah, if you get a million nine forty nine in grants, I'm looking at the green, the net looks to be three hundred and ninety thousand.
Well, the one million there is for that whole row.
Right.
Grants going all the way up to security and technology, blah, blah, blah. There's five hundred eighty thousand dollars in there.
Okay, you're right, that's for the whole row, so what would, what would the total grants be for the, the culvert repairs? Looking at a million?
Oh, it's gonna be more than a million because you're looking at over seven hundred thousand for Davenport. That's why I don't want to spend any of our money.
Right. Are we gonna get to a point that if we don't have these grants, we'll be forced to start work?
Yeah, on some of these culverts, yeah.
All right, well, I hope your phone tag ends soon.
My what?
Your phone tag.
Oh.
I mean, if they've already, if they've already, you know, covered it with the bond issuance, I just don't understand what the holdup is.
No, the only one that I'm a hundred percent confident that we'll get, and I will be stunned if we don't, is Davenport. I mean, that's the first one that we want to do. And I, I really believe that we're gonna get that and then Botswana, and then Minor was the third one.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
We can get two out of three, that'd be great.
Right.
They really need to be done. Small culverts that are just on Squire, right here at South Street, they really need to be addressed.
Didn't we just do Squire Road like ten years ago?
Oh, no.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so we're, we're asking Barbara to add money in for the cost of the, um, the plan?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, unless we have a, as, as Paul called it, a roadmap, we're we're just floundering, we don't know even how much we should be setting aside.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Um, what other big issues are people seeing?
I have a question if I may ask.
Go ahead, Sarah.
The seventy five thousand on town hall building maintenance interior, exterior. It says gutters, bathroom, kitchen upgrades, meeting room tables and chairs.
Yep.
So can you break that down a little?
Those are, uh, yeah, I mean, the, the kitchen could sure use an upgrade. The bathrooms definitely need to be upgraded. I don't know about the tables and chairs, but um, that is in there. And um, wait a minute, where's the other, where's the other one? Town Hall. And again, we've held off, we've held off on them, but.
What kind of upgrade are you thinking about in that kitchen, what's not working?
It's not that it's not working, it's all, all the cabinets and everything are all peeled and everything else.
And what's wrong with the bathroom?
Time for the bathrooms just to be redone, the floors have already been redone, uh, but everything, the, the, what do you call it? The, the sinks and the counters there are all original. And um, I don't know that that's a huge amount of money to redo, but it would be nice to have it redone.
And the gutters, what's wrong with them?
No, actually, that should come out because I got the gutters fixed.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's eighty thousand without the gut, seventy five thousand without the gutters?
Yeah, maybe Jimmy would like to speak to that. Well, we'll pull the gut, the gutters back out because I did get the gutters done. And I'll have to go back and look what we paid for. Yep. We can certainly take money out of that. We can certainly take money out.
Yep.
This was, uh, I think in addition last year, um, the bathrooms and kitchen and chairs and stuff. You know, the, I looked at the chairs and we have such a mixed mash of tables and four different types of chairs and some of them are hard to move around, you know, the tables are, are large bulky things, so non-COVID, whenever there was meetings and we'd have to get Public Works up to help set up the room. So it was an idea to, to get some more maneuverable uh, tables and chairs for conferences or meetings and that kind of stuff. And then like Barbara said, the kitchens and bathrooms are just, the building's built in nineteen ninety one. You know, so we're kind of just due for upgrades. Um, but we put off, you know, I think Patrick helped out a little bit with a quote for the bathroom or for the kitchen. Um, but due to COVID and a whole bunch of stuff that got put on the back burner.
Eventually, it's gonna need to be done.
Yeah, you know, we're just reached a time where you gotta do something. They work, but.
It's just upkeep of infrastructure.
Yeah.
And we recently replaced the, the furnace in Pub, uh, Town Hall, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, we've had everything painted, we replaced the furnace, we've replaced the carpeting, um, like I said, it's just, like Jimmy said, nineteen ninety one was a lot of, of original stuff in here, is the, I just think the bathrooms can be updated for sure. And the kitchen, all the cabinets are, they're all breaking and peeling. So as far as tables and chairs, that can certainly wait.
Yeah, I would say tables and chairs can wait.
Yep.
Thirty year old kitchen, that, that might be time.
Well, also, we had, where we rented this town hall, we haven't done that in a while and people do come in and use it for showers or whatever, weddings. And we haven't done that either, so it does get used, the church is in here, but they haven't used the kitchen in over a year because they haven't been in here, they're, they're in here now, but they don't, they don't use any of that, so. Whatever you like, you want it out, take it out.
What's the sense of the board on that?
I'll just chime in that, uh, I mean, it, it is a public space, I think the kitchen needs it, uh, just my opinion. Uh, looking at it, uh, when I was over there, I just kind of took a look at it and it definitely use an upgrade. Uh, it does represent the town, we have other people that, that go in there. Uh, in nineteen ninety one, that's, it's quite an old kitchen. Uh, that gets pretty heavily used, let alone for the people that work in the town. So I'm kind of for that.
I'm also for the bathrooms, I've been in there as well. I mean, look, our people have to be happy and comfortable and do use those facilities.
Well, we fixed, we repaired things, I mean, uh, poor Nancy Lord. Uh, God bless her, but you know, she, her desk was under when the pipes broke and it all came pouring down on her, so I mean, we have, we have done work there, we have put in an, a counter that was in the kitchen. Brian Cardagena did that for us years ago, but it's all stained and that's all. Like I said, um, take it out, if you don't want it.
It, it seems to me that if we think we're gonna need this in the next couple of years, this is the year to do it.
Yep.
I agree.
And honestly, the, uh, the quote for the kitchen, uh, even redo, redesigning it and adding more and everything was still under twenty thousand. Um, and that's to have it installed. Um, there's gonna be some additional costs, you know, with upgrading plumbing fixtures and maybe appliances. Uh, but we're not talking about a huge amount of money. Um, it's nothing compared to culverts.
Arguably not as important as culverts though, either.
Obviously, yeah. Very arguably.
All right. And how do we feel about the bathrooms? I'm, I'm kind of neutral on them, I haven't spent a lot of time in the bathrooms at Town Hall to have an opinion.
I would visit, Andy. Would you, would you have those bathrooms in your home? I think the answer would be no.
Very possible. Does anyone else have, uh, strong opinions on that?
Yeah, I, I would agree then, I know the men's room looks a little tired, so I wouldn't have a problem with upgrading it.
Yeah. Okay, well then, it seems that, uh, the board would say, keep it in.
But then I can retire my singing fish that I hang in the men's room at Christmas.
That's just a, an image that I wasn't aware of. It's probably gonna be in the papers too.
And God bless Eleanor Harl, but because she brought a lot of her old lady friends in to look at it and they were laughing. It would start ringing because it was motions.
Big mouth, big mouth Billy Bass, is that what it was? All right, okay. Yep, now we know a lot about the town of Roxbury.
Yeah.
But even if you leave it in, do you need the seventy five? There's five there already, right?
Well, you know what? I mean, we have things, like I said, we get, we replace the furnace, we've done things like that, but we've replaced the water tank a couple of times, for some reason they rot out. It's just, it's all under Town Hall.
I think what we're asking is, we're gonna, with whatever changes we make tonight, we already added the manual that Barbara's gonna need to just go back in and when we're done and do a final version for us, right? I mean, it doesn't make sense to try and figure out what, what is and isn't gonna be in there here tonight.
No, we don't need to micromanage that.
Well, you do, because, um, you know, if you want it out, I need to know.
Right.
If you want it in there, you want to lessen it, whatever.
But we already have seventy five thousand dollars in there.
Excuse me?
We have seventy five thousand dollars from last year in there. Um, so this year we're looking at, uh, more like eighty thousand. I would take.
No, actually, no, actually, there's eighty in there, we're not adding anymore to the budget.
Right, exactly. I would, of those expenditures, I would question the need to replace the tables and chairs. They don't seem to be
Right.
An immediate issue.
It isn't, we put it on, we put it on hold, we can keep it on hold or we can get rid of it.
Okay, good.
But we're not, we're not budgeting anymore there, that is still, that was all done before, we have that money as the balance.
Yeah, we have that money, we're not adding, I get it. Okay. Okay.
So, so I feel like I just need to raise the issue of the procedures manual, which we usually raise during the audit. But um, are we just gonna keep carrying it or, you know, it seems to me if we're not, if, if we're really not gonna do it, let's just take it out.
That seems like a, an eminently practical. That seems like a, an eminently practical approach because unless, um, something changes going forward, um, it, you know.
Well, um, actually I was talking with Jimmy about it and, uh, I do have someone that, uh, worked at Kerma who retired. And this was her specialty. But Jimmy, i- in upgrading, uh, some of the security stuff and looking to maybe do away with Zoom and getting Teams and Microsoft. The, the procedures will change a little bit. So I, I kind of said, well, then I won't look at that. This is actually a board of finance project that you all wanted to do.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And so, um, I'm happy to contact this woman. Um, I, I know you're gonna say we gotta go out to bed. I, I know what, what kind of work she does. And, uh, I mean, Jimmy was thinking about, you were asking him to take it on. And Paul, you were gonna help with that.
Yeah.
Just, it's a huge undertaking, I think. And I certainly don't wanna do it.
I'm certainly willing to help out Jimmy and with any other consults, consultants who wanted to bring in. I think we have the basic bones. We just have to build it. Then I think crib from other towns.
So here's a question. Can the board of finance create subcommittees?
Sure.
Would it make sense to have a subcommittee to, uh, take care of, uh, creating a procedures manual? Or is that just adding another layer and?
Yep.
Something that could be done.
And I, I guess we can leave, I guess we could leave it in the budget and deal with it separately at, at the board of finance. But, you know, I, I also think we should be realistic. Jimmy, you, you can speak for yourself. But I think we should be realistic about how much time you're gonna have to do this with all the other stuff you've taken on.
No, it's already.
To, time is definitely a factor. But to be honest, with Barbara retiring, maybe this is something for the new person to, to, you know, dive into with you guys and
Yeah.
to get to know what people do and, and that's just a thought, but. Barbara did reach out to, uh, CCM and I did get a bunch of other towns ones. Um, and I still have those. And, and like Paul said, there is a very, very, very rough draft, but, uh, it's just time.
Hire somebody. You have the money for it. There's somebody that, that's what they do. It's just a lot easier than.
Yeah. Maybe Jimmy and I should sit down and go organize what we do have. And so we can make it more efficient if we do wanna bring in this consultant. And then, you know, not necessarily table it, but move it on to Barbara's successor.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Have everything collated in a, in really good fashion. And I mean, Jimmy and I can order it in such a way that it follows other towns' outlines, right?
Yeah, at this point in the budget process, I don't think we should be undertaking it. So and down the road a little bit till June, July, when we're not doing a whole lot anyway. Um, I think that makes a ton of sense.
I agree.
Me too.
Okay. Um, next, what else? We have the elephant in the room of the first election salaries. I'd like to address one other issue before we, um, go down that particular rabbit hole. I saw an article in the paper, uh, yesterday's paper, the day before, uh, about the region twelve budget. And, um, how they have about a million dollars in the capital improvement fund. And, um, they decided not to take money from that to fund the, uh, new roof uh, and work at, uh, Burnham School. Um, and one of the comments was that there was no objection from the towns of Bridgewater or Roxbury, uh, about that. And, uh, you know, frankly, I wasn't paying attention, but, uh, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, the roof at Burnham School is going to come out of the, the, uh, next year's school budget. Uh, and we're getting a pretty good hit on the school budget as it is. Uh, so I for one object to them not taking it out of their capital improvement budget unless there's something I don't understand.
I also saw that article and, um, I have to be honest with you. I'm stunned that I wasn't there, but I don't recall getting the date for when the public hearing was for that. However, I didn't read it like that. I read it that they were just not going, it wasn't for that specific project. Um, so I need, uh, I, are you saying that you know that it was for that specific project?
That's how I read that article. I might go back and reread it. It was in a Republican
Yeah.
two days ago.
Uh, because I don't know why it would not be, uh, taken out of there. And for them to, uh, because that's exactly what it's supposed to be for.
Exactly.
Time projects.
Yeah. When they, we're talking about how they have more money in that fund than they've had in years, which is true. And I understand that the school board needs to put money aside when and where it can because it has no taxing authority. Um, and it can't go back to the taxpayers in the course of a budget year, uh, if all of a sudden they have an emergency. So they do need some money if they have a catastrophic roof collapse, for example. They, they need some money in that fund. But do they need over a million dollars in that? I don't know.
Yeah, Andy, I feel the same way as you. Um, one thing I do remember from the article was that the treasurer, I believe, was the one that brought it up.
Yes.
I'm not sure if we read the same article or not.
I'm sure we did.
But it was the treasurer for the board of education. Um, I can't recall the gentleman's name. But he's the one that brought it up and he was basically shot down. It was the way I understood the article. So, and he was in favor of taking the money out of that, uh, capital reserve fund.
Yeah. Uh, I can reach out to Greg Kova and, uh, see what his take, uh, on it is. Uh, it's been a while since I talked to Greg anyway, so.
I, I took it that there was no comment from, uh, Washington and Bridgewater.
They specifically said Roxbury.
On the, uh, both, two towns.
Yeah.
On the budget. I mean, the numbers were there that we definitely had an increase because we had the most students. So fighting the percentage and I, I did, I, uh, Kim spoke with the, um, the school finance officer and I spoke with the, uh, superintendent separately. But I did not go to that. And, um, seeing the increase, yeah, I almost fell off my chair. But then I was seeing what the revenue side was going to be and how it fit into our budget. And that's why we have people on the school board also.
Yeah. No, it's not all bad news from, and from the board event. It certainly is an apportionment issue. I get that. Um, you know, their increase is less than two percent this year. So it's not, it's not a terrible increase, except that it's hitting us pretty hard. Um, but that particular fund, why else do you have a capital improvement fund except to do capital improvements?
Well, I'm gonna check on that because I don't see how they can put that in their operating budget.
Yeah.
Doesn't add up.
Right. I, I may have misread it.
Yeah. I, that doesn't add up at all. Um, the people voted to allow them to put in a one percent, up to one percent, I believe, into that fund every year.
Yeah.
And, um,
Yeah.
All our school buildings are older, but they've done, they've done a lot of work on them. Now they need.
Ever since they hired Donna Leary, um, the buildings, the condition of the buildings has improved dramatically.
Yeah.
Um, okay. And, uh, is there anything anyone else wants to discuss before we start in on the matter of first selectmen salaries?
Um, I just noticed that the Restorrenzo sent us all a, uh, email talking about Butch. You might wanna check your emails.
Not sure I understand. There's no business justification to add to public works.
Well, does Butch, does Butch manage bidding and all of those processes?
No.
That's all you. I mean, he's a foreman, is not the same as a public works manager in my mind.
Oh. No, uh, and you could see, you know, I, I, we could certainly talk about it now or later, but, uh, what is, what is he exactly asking?
Is, I have a question. Is, is Butch a member of the Teamsters Union or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Russ is objecting to the idea, the potential idea of adding a public, excuse me, adding a public works director. Um, and Julie, I wanna be sure that Russ's email gets into the public record. Um, since it was all, you know, it's a public document, um, particular relations. It was emailed to us all in the middle of a public meeting. Um, so please add that to the minutes. I'm sure you'd do that anyway, but.
I, I can add his email. Um, I need, I need the email or I can just reference it.
Um, somebody will get you that email.
Thank you.
But I, yeah, Russ says he'll be at the next meeting. Um, uh, otherwise we're just kind of speculating about what he means. So unless somebody else has a clearer understanding than I do, shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay, then, um, Barbara sent around an email earlier. Again, that should be part of the record, um, about first selectmen salaries throughout the region, the northwest corner. Um, and why can't I click on the right icon? And.
Would you like me to share that screen?
It would be good if you could share that. Yeah. Please do, Julie. There we go. I think Torrington is obviously kind of an outlier in a, in terms of, uh, being a comparable. Arlington's budget is twice ours.
Yeah, Andy, are you hoping to resolve this tonight?
We need to resolve it at some point.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking that, that the information is great. Um, I think if we could have it more like in some kind of Excel spreadsheet or chart that we, uh, which I'd be happy to do, um, it might make it, it might make it easier to, to make, to the, the information might be more useful if we had it in a way we could compare towns to towns. And I know Barbara didn't have the time to do that, but I'd be happy to, to put that together.
What does everyone else think? Um, I, I have no problem looking at it the way it is, but.
Okay.
I think that's nice, Minette. Um, but I, I think we should maybe go through it and just eliminate the outliers. And just read those specifically that, you know, apply. Save this time and you time tune in that.
I was, Goshens municipal budget so high. That's an interesting thing. Can you scroll down a little, Julie?
Is this, uh, I have a question on Bridgewater, which is the last, uh, the last one in the, uh, email. Indicates that the, they have a public work supervisor at a salary of eighty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Who does all the bidding and bid documents, et cetera, does a lot of what Kim, uh, Barron does as far as, you know, getting all the numbers for FEMA, et cetera. He does a lot.
Yep. And just to be clear, Butch doesn't do any of that.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that back. As far as like how many hours, you know, a piece of machinery was used, et cetera. Yes, he gets that information from him.
Okay.
But it's a lot more than, than that. With the FEMA's information.
Is the question on the table whether we wanna add a public works supervisor or what? How much of this we need to take into account when we're setting the salary for the first select?
I suspect.
Which are we, which are we, which are we talking about?
I suspect the idea of a public works, um, director, uh, is at the present time a non-starter with the board of selectmen.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure, um, Russ would vote no three times if he could. And, uh, uh, my guess is Jim feels similarly, but I, I don't wanna put words in his mouth. This is right here. So I, I don't think that's.
So were you using this information to inform our decision about the salary for the first selectmen?
Exactly so. That's my understanding.
To the extent that Barbara has been managing all of that, I would argue that that her salary today doesn't reflect her value.
Fair enough point.
I mean, if you just took a quarter of what our Bridgewater gentleman is getting and add that to her's compensation, that would be much more like it. So to the extent that the town is not, um, interested in hiring a public works officer and, and frankly, I agree. I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's necessary because I think the sort of talent that we have around us and those who will likely run have the capability, you know, to achieve those things. So, you know, if I put another layer in, that would probably only complicate life at town hall. Um, so again, if we wanna attract a person who has those skill sets, then this will go into our discussions on first election salary.
Yeah.
Can I, uh, speak to Bridgewater's supervisor salary?
Please go ahead, Jim.
Jim Conway. Uh, I know the fellow, the gentleman that has that position. And as well as being supervisor, he also shows up at seven o'clock. If there's a snowstorm, he's plowing snow. He's an employee of the road crew as well as doing the grant writing and whatever for bridges and all that. Uh, he's an employee who does, gets in a truck and works. So part of the eighty thousand is what he's paid for doing two jobs.
That's true.
That's two jobs.
But I have asked for a, a road supervisor for as long as I can remember. And, um, and it, I, I, the road foreman really shouldn't even be in the union. But that's how I inherited it. And the road supervisor would not be in the union. It would not be a union position. But they could also plow and do everything else.
Yeah. And that might be, uh, a position to discuss in greater depth, uh, if Butch ever decides to retire. He may live to be a hundred and twenty and continue to work, so.
Well, for the last two positions, I asked that we could hire above and, uh, we didn't. So we have two. Well, for the last two positions, I asked that we could hire above and we didn't. So we have two guys who are great, that can do anything. And, and, but I mean, but they are not, they're not road supervisors.
Okay, but that's kind of a, let's not beat a dead horse there. So comparing the different salaries here, I'm toggling back and forth to my email so I can scroll down and look at things. You know, we're looking at.
They're all different. They're all different. How long they've been in, in office, it's how the different towns, you know, the miles of roads. Bridgewater, they have thirty miles of roads. We have sixty. Washington has ninety.
Right.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into it. So you can't, it's, it's hard just looking at, at this.
Well, it's, it's, it's a very helpful place to start, for sure.
And I mean, how many people are in public works, you know? We have five. Bridgewater has four. And I think Washington has ten.
And we have twice as many road, twice as, twice the mileage of Bridgewater with only one more person.
Correct.
And that, 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 does that include the public works director in, in that headcount? In Bridgewater?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Well, this is good information. Maybe we don't resolve this tonight. Maybe we commit to resolving it next meet, uh, next meeting. Once we've all had a little bit more time to chew on it, I think most of us have a pretty good sense of what direction we'd like to go, but I'd still like to give it a little bit more time in case further information comes out. Does that make sense?
Sorry, Andy. Does that mean we should defer our executive session until next week?
No, I think there are probably other issues that should be discussed in executive session. And I know that Jimmy Harbert wanted to address us in executive session. So I'd like to, to allow that to happen.
Okay.
Unless Jimmy's changed his mind, but that's what I was told this afternoon.
Whatever's easier for you guys.
No, let's, uh, let's do it. Okay, is there any reason not to go into executive session at this point?
No, I think you should.
All right then. Julie, can you make it so? And might as well leave Jimmy in on this because let, let's take care of his issue first. And then is that, yeah, then he can leave.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Ah, yes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so I'm going to let Jimmy stay with the board and the selectmen.
Yep.
Okay.
And it looks like.
I'm still setting it up, just. Okay, I've got you guys with Jimmy and text me when you're ready for me to come back and I'm stopping the recording now. We are back. Just so you guys know.
Hi, Julie.
Hello. You're recording and I've got Kim Pekwicke still in the waiting room.
Okay, bring her on.
She gets points for, I don't know what.
Falling asleep in front of her computer.
She hung out for about an hour and twenty minutes.
Wow.
I had eighteen to nine thirty-seven.
Wow.
So how is next Tuesday for everyone?
I'm gonna get to a calendar here.
I'm just looking now.
Ramadan, first day of Ramadan.
Listen, I'm busy. No, I'm good on Tuesday.
It's the thirteenth, right?
It's the thirteenth. That's a lucky day for all of us.
I'm okay.
Okay.
First day of Ramadan just means you don't eat during the daylight. That's all.
Is that true than that?
So when Didier and I bought.
Well, it's not my religion, but I believe it's, I believe you fast until sundown.
Right, you fast till the sun is up.
When Didier and I bought in the south of France five, six years ago, all the movers were of that faith. And we wanted to move, move out and delayed everything. But the south of France is full of folks who celebrate Ramadan.
I don't think it's a big holiday here, so.
No.
So let's set next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Okay. That's great. I need, do we? This was a very productive meeting and I, I've learned a lot. So I appreciate everything that Barbara and her team have produced. I think the budget presentation is really excellent. And I, I, you know, but I'm, I'm proud to be a member of this board and a member of this community.
Likewise.
Need an executive session next meeting?
We, let's put it on the agenda. We don't have to do that, but please put it on the agenda, Julie.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, John, to have the option, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's a special meeting and we can't change the agenda.
So I'm just letting you know, you have two more weeks. Well, no, you probably have two and a half more weeks before you need to.
Twenty-sixth, right?
Approve the budget to take to the budget hearing.
And the budget hearings on the twenty-sixth.
Yes. However, today, another executive order came out from the governor that said that the Board of Selectmen would have the authority to change their any, their annual meeting dates. And I mean, I don't see that we really wanna do that. And unless you don't decide, you need so many days before an annual meeting from your public, public hearing.
I don't think we're going to need that.
Definitely wouldn't need that. I think in fact, we're kind of ahead of the game. Ready?
I'm just telling you, he just keeps writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't be interested.
No, let's keep, deadlines are good things.
Yeah. Okay. I, I don't have much experience in this, but how many people do you think are gonna really join, you know, a Zoom meeting to talk about the, the town budget, especially if we can like pre-communicate, we're lowering the mill rate.
Right.
Well, that may work in our favor. I think we can buy down the mill rate. I think we should buy down the mill rate.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We'll get points for that and you know what? And people will hear that and they're gonna go like, thank God. And then I don't think we're gonna have issues. That's my personal view.
Well, that, that may be true, but there are also people who look, take a longer term view and say, if we're giving people raises, those are perpetual. Buying down the mill rate is, depending on how it's done, it could be a one time thing. Anyway, is there anything else we wanna cover tonight?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Hi.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.